Order the Weaver City Council Meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Joyce J.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen?
So moved.
Second.
We have motioned to approve the minutes, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. I think we need two council members to please abstain. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to zero with councilmembers Davis and Starker abstaining.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any item that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Please step forward and spell your last name for the agenda. And please state your city or your address, and if you wish, please form a line if you're here for public comment.
Okay. Nancy Snow, and I'm speaking here on behalf of Weaver Ridge United Neighborhoods. You all know that a few weeks ago, we had a wonderful forum. And I want to remind everyone that you can now listen to the forum. Either by streaming on the city's website or Channel Eight. And citizens in Weaver Ridge, I think, have something nobody else in the state has, which is you could actually see everybody running for office. You don't have to vote just on those nice slick things you get saying that this candidate's, you know, God's gift to the legislature. Anyway, please, please watch. It's on a couple of times a day. Every city councilman, every candidate got to speak, answer five questions. Same for the three people running for mayor. And then after that, all six people running for the school board spoke, except I think one had to have a friend speak for him or her. And then after that, you have people pro and con the two ballot items. Now, the last, I know you all got a blue book and everything's in there, but as I say, you have something different. You can actually see everybody who's running for office, and I hope you'll all watch, and I think you get the ballots this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward and spell your last name for the record.
I'm Eileen Kratzler, K-R-A-T-Z-E-R. My address is two eight two five Newland Street in Weaver Ridge. And I have lived here for thirteen years with my family. We moved here when I was pregnant with my first child, and we now have three. We've put a huge addition on our house, over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And in the last couple of years, we have thoroughly enjoyed the changes that Weaver Ridge has been making. We go to yoga in the park, all the live local, the cruiser bike crawls, the different events. We're planning on going to trunk or treat in a couple of weeks. And we also enjoy the changes on Twenty-Ninth Street. We walk right down there. We have dinner at Right Coast Pizza and thoroughly enjoy ourselves. And I'm here to say that, speaking for my friends that live in Weaver Ridge and for my family, we would like to see that growth continue and for it to be a priority for the city council and the mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Weaver. I'm at one 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 zero zero West Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And I'm here in a similar capacity. I don't often get out to city council meetings, and so I thought I'd come here to say that I really am excited about the initiatives that have also been happening in Weaver Ridge in the last few years. I initially got involved with the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Task Force, and that was a big part for me, which pulled me into other great initiatives. And I just love the whole redevelopment of Thirty-Eighth. I think it's just amazing for Weaver Ridge. And I just want us to see us have more revenue to do things like that, because I think it really brings us together as a community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-A-R, and I live in District One in Weaver Ridge. Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Weaver Ridge, good evening. My name is Karen Thaler, and I am running for Weaver Ridge City Council in District One. First, I would like to thank Weaver Ridge United Neighborhoods for hosting the candidate forum on October second. It was a well-done, and I was really glad to be a part of that. I would now like to share some information about myself, so citizens can be informed before you cast your vote. I am a District One native. I attended Stevens Elementary, Weaver Ridge Junior High, and graduated from Weaver Ridge High in nineteen eighty-seven. Today, I turned forty-five years old, and I'm already being reminded by my kind husband that I am halfway to fifty. What a nice guy. My occupation is landscape management. My community involvement includes two years, two years on Carnation Festival Committee, Weaver Ridge Civic Academy, Weaver Ridge Citizens Police Academy. Two thousand and seven through two thousand and eleven, represented Weaver Ridge as a state finalist for Mrs. Colorado, earning title holder of the year and crowning achievement awards for my community involvement. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eleven, also read proclamations before city council meetings. Two thousand and eleven, wrote column titled "Hometown Pride" in the Gazette. My values are representing not only District One, but the entire city, standing up for what I believe is fair, having great respect for the dollar and the manner in which it is spent. I welcome citizen input, because I firmly believe it's the citizens who ultimately define a city's success or failure. Any questions or comments, I can be reached at dkthaler@msn.com or three oh three five eight seven four eight seven one. All candidate bios can be found in this week's transcript, and ballots are delivered out this week. Once again, my name is Karen Thaler, and I'm running for Weaver Ridge City Council in District One, and I kindly ask for your vote November fifth. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else to speak on public comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes this evening on the agenda? The agenda will stand as by unanimous consent. Consider the agenda, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce the consent agenda. There are five items tonight. One A, motion to approve award of ITB thirteen twenty-four Twenty-Ninth Avenue Storm Sewer to JBC Pipeline Contractors Commerce City, Colorado, in a contracted amount of eight hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents, with a contingency amount of eighty-three thousand, that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract in contingency amount of nine hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. B, motion to cancel study sessions of October twenty-first and November fourth, two thousand and thirteen. C, Resolution thirty-eight, two thousand and thirteen, approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for maintenance of traffic signals. D, Resolution forty, two thousand and thirteen, approving submission of an application for a two thousand and fourteen local government grant to Jefferson County Open Space for the relocation of Clear Creek Trail west of Kipling from Forty-First Avenue to open space north of Forty-First Avenue. And E, motion to approve payment for sales tax increment for the September of fiscal year two thousand and thirteen from the Town Center project in the amount of seventy thousand, six hundred and six dollars and fifty-eight cents to renewal Weaver Ridge, to renewal Weaver Ridge. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve one A, B, C, D, and E.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, was seconded by Mr. Starker. Discussion on the consent. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item is public hearings and ordinances on second reading.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask that council goes to item number three before the budget? We're waiting for some staff members to come.
Okay.
They should be here by now.
Does council have any problem doing item number three first? So, item number three is council bill thirteen dash two thousand and thirteen. We were actually in the public hearing, and we had public comment, so we're actually still in the public hearing. Mr. Dahl?
No, I don't have anything to add on Stafford report, other than what's in the, in the packet.
Okay. So, we will continue public comment. Is anybody here to speak on item number three? Please step forward and spell your last name for the record, and then state your city or your address, and then we will continue the public hearing.
Mayor, councilpeople, it's a little scratchy. I'm Herb Schillerff, thirty-nine hundred Garrison Street. We came to Weaver Ridge-
Please spell your last name for the record.
Schillerff.
Please spell it for the record. Thank you.
We came to Weaver Ridge in nineteen sixty-three, been here some fifty years. We love the place and great place to live, and we'd like to see it stay the same. Very much opposed to this marijuana situation. I don't believe it's, has any need in the elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, or any employment. I have never read a sign, you need marijuana to have this position. I think it's very detrimental to our city. There's many locations throughout the state where a person can certainly feel their needs. I hope you take in consideration, some of us people that's been here a while, and our thoughts of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address.
My name is Patty Nicholl, N-I-C-H-O-L-L. I live at thirty-seven twenty Allison Street.
Feel free to pull that down a little bit if you have to. Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. And I also oppose having marijuana being brought into Weaver Ridge. I think that Weaver Ridge has always had a very family-oriented image, and I think this is completely the opposite. I have lived here a long time. I've raised my children here. I'm delighted that just recently, a young family moved in next door to me with two young children. And I think that's the type of people we want to come into Weaver Ridge. We want to lift our city up, and not on the high of marijuana, but on our good family reputation and on our good schools and our parks. And I just feel that bringing in retail marijuana will bring our whole city down. And if anything, we need to raise it up. We are competing now with Belmar, we are competing with Downtown Arvada and all these different places. And when you read in the paper that Weaver Ridge could be the forerunner of Jefferson County to bring in retail marijuana shops, it just breaks my heart, because that, to me, is completely opposite of the image that anybody in Weaver Ridge, I think, truly wants. I also am fairly upset that nobody really knows about this. In talking to people, nobody knew there was a vote tonight. I saw one small article in the paper, in the small Weaver Ridge paper, and then I went online and tried to find it, and there's nothing even listed on this meeting tonight that is even talking about marijuana. And I think that's really unfair to all the citizens of retail, that this vote is happening, and that it's not really well-known at all. So, I once again agree with the gentleman before me, that you would please vote no against retail marijuana in Weaver Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Dawson, that's spelled D-A-W-S-O-N. I live at eighty-six twenty-two West Forty-Fourth Place. My wife and I, we've lived here for over forty years, and I echo the sentiments of the previous two speakers. I have a science background, and I would appeal to you on the basis of what I learned as a scientist, that it's best to test things out in a small way and see how they go. And there's many opportunities for Weaver Ridge to observe what happens with the legalization of marijuana by watching other communities and seeing what happens as those communities, you know, embrace the sale of, sale, selling of marijuana. It concerns me deeply that this is the kind of thing that is very, very difficult, maybe impossible, to reverse once it's enacted. And I would hope that you folks on the council would, you know, set aside and give it two or three years and see what happens in the surrounding communities before you make any kind of commitment to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more from public comment for item number three? Okay, we'll move on to council discussion. Seeing none, I will, Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is not one of the easiest things we've ever had to do. It's, it's easy to say that we don't want recreational marijuana in our city, but it would be naive to say that we haven't had it for decades. It's been sold in alleyways and parking lots and homes and basements for years and years and years. We do have Amendment sixty-four that was passed last year. Basically says that each adult in Colorado is, is able to and permitted to grow six plants in their home. If you have two, two adults, you have twelve. If you have three adults, you have eighteen. Without regulation, without any kind of permitting process, without any kind of background check, without any way of showing where this is going. Amendment sixty-four entitles them to transfer up to an ounce at a time to another adult. But again, that's unregulated and impossible to track. Like I said, it's been happening in commercial areas, in residential areas. It's just been done by the black market. I think the best way to cut the legs out from under the black market is to regulate it in a commercial area, giving people a place to buy it where it's well-lit, it's safe. The people who've sold this, who have the stores, have gone through pretty extensive background checks. They have, their employees go through background checks. They can only sell to people that are over twenty-one. Now, there's not, once the people leave, of course, there's nothing they can do about it, but I, I don't think they're gonna take a chance of selling it to someone who they believe are gonna go out and sell it to minors. You know, some of the, the new laws that Amendment sixty-four brought about was, you know, I won't even talk about the tax, because it's, it's obvious it's a tax. We don't know where the money's gonna go. It's promised certain places, you know, certain, certain percentages will go to schools or something like that, but that's really not the, not the case, not the issue here. Our issue here is if we want to extend what we have as medical marijuana to a retail setting. Nothing we do tonight, whether we vote yes or no, is going to stop marijuana sales. And, you know, one way to stop it- And, you know, one way to stop it illegally from happening is to put another set of eyes out there. I can, maybe this is a terrible example, but I know that if someone were selling pizza illegally on the streets without a license or without a permit and not paying their taxes, I would be the first one to turn them in. The police wouldn't have to go look for those people. So, the, the stores that we have, we have distances between, I think we wrote a very, very thorough medical marijuana ordinance and it's going to carry on to the retail. There's only a few, there's only five stores currently in town and I think it's pretty maxed out as far as distances go. And, you know, I support going ahead and giving those people a chance to see if the retail comes through, to transition into a, a retail setting as opposed to a medical setting. And like I said, those people will be new eyes and ears for us to help out when we, you know, if we see something going on outside that shouldn't be, shouldn't be going on, we're going to have a whole new set of eyes to point out the people who are doing it illegally. I myself did not vote for Amendment 64. One reason was selfish because I didn't want to have to say this in front of people tonight. I didn't want to have to stand up and defend something like this because I do think it's a little bit crazy that we're talking about it. And I've heard a lot of people say that, "Well, this is crazy." I agree, it is crazy. It's crazy to sit up here and talk to you about this kind of stuff. But, the thing that we're voting for tonight is just to transition our, I think, very well-thought-out ordinance to a retail setting and hopefully get rid of, like I say, cut the legs out of the black market of marijuana and do anything we can to, to do that. I think that's the safest thing to say and that's why I'm going to support this ordinance tonight.
Any other comments? Ms. Langworthy?
So, I have some comments. First of all, what I would say is that this, this measure doesn't really address the home growers. This is just a new retail business. The people who can grow in their homes will continue to grow in their homes. The problems that we face with that, we are going to continue to face. This will not address that in any way. This is just retail. Also, the fact that we're a home rule city means that we don't have to do, we don't, we can, we can at least put a moratorium on this measure and say this is, this is a lot to take on right now. We did this with the medical marijuana, we took some time, we got the opportunity to see what some of our bigger surrounding communities, Denver, Aurora, did to manage this. I know for a fact that Denver now is looking at the impact of the smell of marijuana and I, I work in a building where someone has a medicinal marijuana license and I'm going to tell you, it's, it's just horrible and they're, they're far enough away from me that I shouldn't be impacted, but I am. And if I bring my daughter to work, she smells it, you know, and wonders what that is. And so, I would, I would rather wait and, and at least see what some of that addressing the smell would do. The other part of it is, is we'd be naive to believe that our children are not going to get access to this. I mean, the parents that have it or the teenagers that get it over 16, bring it in the house and their siblings probably have access to it. And if, if they, if we think they don't, then we're wrong. I've already heard about it being in the elementary schools. That's scary to me. Those children that are young age shouldn't even have access to this and it's not necessarily in, in the, I mean, it comes in brownie form, candy form, all these different accesses and we're sending our children to school and we can't control whether or not that comes in. We open the door to retail and that's additional children that are going to have marijuana in their house that they may have access to. And I, I just don't believe that that's a positive thing. And I, I mean, I'm not going to support this. I can't support something that puts more marijuana into households that could potentially get to people who shouldn't have access to it.
Ms. Davis?
I just want to quickly mirror a little bit of what Mr. Demott had said. I, I will say, when you drive 38th and, I mean, the 38th from Fed, wait, Sheridan down into the Denver area, you do see many medical marijuana businesses and they're all right next to each other. You see those little neon green crosses and all that kind of stuff that just drives you crazy and they, they pop up everywhere and they are everywhere. And, and I do believe that Wheat Ridge has set a strong ordinance with their medical marijuana in requiring distances from schools. Another thing is, is, is they all have to be certain, let me look here, that certain distance away from each other so that we don't have them right next to each other and we have a whole street of, in the case as it stands now, medical marijuana. But again, this ordinance is converting those medical marijuana into retail. And again, mirroring that there's probably, the way this ordinance is written, there's not the square footage or square miles in our city that would accommodate any more areas. So, again, I, I think it was a thought-out ordinance. It's an ordinance that, yeah, some of us, you know, it is kind of silly to have to think that we have to, to look at this, but it, it was a well-thought-out ordinance. And it's just my thoughts on it.
Ms. J?
I have been an advocate of good health for many years. It is difficult for me to support this when I think about the American Lung Association statements about four times more tar in the lungs, the fact that children, young people are more drawn to it, that it is, creates a situation of, of, of not good schoolwork, more lethargic type of activities. I, I think about the fact that people who smoke cigarettes, this is from the American Lung Association, have a tendency to smoke, if they smoke marijuana too, overall more smoking occurs. And I, I'm for, excuse me, medical marijuana and it's not morally a thing for me. It's about health and it's also about that, for me, it's a sense of the city that, that I like to keep it a little more free. When I keep talking about hometown values and it, it just feels to me like the hometown values do not go, the two of them don't work well together. So, I will not be supporting it.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2013, an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws by adding a new Article 13 concerning retail marijuana and making certain amendments to Chapter 26, zoning and development, in association therewith as amended on second reading and that it take effect upon final adoption as provided by Section 511 of the Charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three with second by Mr. Pond, discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to three with, excuse me, Councilmember Stites, Langworthy, and J voting no.
Thank you. So we'll go back to item number two, which is a public hearing on the 2014 budget. So tonight, staff's going to make a short presentation, PowerPoint presentation, then we'll have public comment after the presentation as our normal public hearing process.
Do you need to open the public hearing, Mayor? Do you need to open a public hearing first or?
I did.
Oh, you did already?
I said we'll open a public hearing and we're going to take public comment after Did you overload it with PowerPoints, Patrick? It's a PowerPoint presentation.
I have the slides tonight.
Taking after the chief.
Okay, thank you for your patience on that. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and public. We are pleased to present the 2014 proposed budget to, to the public this evening. Just as a reminder, the proposed budget was distributed to City Council on September 10th and was made available to the public for review. We did present the budget to City Council at the September 16th study session where there was discussion. October 14th is tonight, the public hearing which is required by our city charter. We are scheduled to adopt the budget on October 28th, which is in time for, or before the December 15th deadline for budget adoption. In this, earlier this summer, we, we had two opportunities for public input on the budget. Those were on July 8th and August 12th and we had numerous citizens attend. Could the videographer please turn down the camera lights also? Thank you. We had several, several folks come in and, and request certain things for the budget. In summary, most of those requests were for Wheat Ridge 2020 and community development efforts and Ridge at 38th events, other community events and programs for economic development, continued funding for bicycle and pedestrian projects and funding for active transportation and multi-modal transfer, or connections. When we develop the budget on an annual basis, we always look back at the City Council's vision, which is set by City Council and, and verified every year. And the city, the vision for the, for City Wheat Ridge is Wheat Ridge is a beautiful city and a community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, vibrant activity centers, and multi-modal transportation. Wheat Ridge residents enjoying active, healthy lifestyle and hometown feeling and pride. Wheat Ridge, a great place to live. And then also, City Council does set goals, five-year goals. Every year they are reviewed to make sure they are still relevant and these are the four major goals that the City Council has in place. Economically viable commercial areas, financially sound city, providing exceptional service, choice of desirable neighborhoods, and more attractive Wheat Ridge. So those goals and that mission's, vision statement are the foundation for the creation of the budget. As I mentioned, we did meet with City Council to discuss the proposed budget and there was some discussion, as I mentioned, and some requests from City Council and those have been added or subtracted from the budget. And those include additions in the amount of $50,000, $30,000 for the Senior Resource Center circular bus program, $10,000 contribution to the Jeffco School District Outdoor Lab Program, and $10,000 contribution to the Jeffco Action Center capital campaign for their construction of their new building. There was also some reductions in the proposed budget as originally presented. Some of those are for the, funding to Wheat Ridge 2020. There's a $10,000 reduction in a business district feasibility study, $5,000 reduction for live local events, and $5,000 reduction for East Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Block Also, there was a decrease in the contribution to the Wheat Ridge Business District from $90,000 down to $45,000. And then also was elimination of one vehicle request in the amount of $48,000. There's also a few other direction, some other direction received from City Council and those included the direction to continue funding the Jeffco EDC at its, at its current funding level of $6,600 a year. There was direction to include bicycle facility improvement options along Pierce Street and we didn't include those yet in the proposed budget, but we would like further direction from City Council. But staff has reviewed some options and they range from $20,000 to $125,000. I believe there was more detail in your, your staff memo. We were able to identify $63,000 in budget savings with, with the additions and cuts. So, staff's recommendation would be to transfer those funds to the CIP budget and use those for bicycle facility improvements along Pierce Street. There was also some discussion about the part, or paid time off buyback program. Consensus was that that would be reviewed in 2014 with City Council. And that, that was the, the primary direction that we received that evening from City Council. So, with those changes, I would like to present a summary of the proposed budget for 2014. We are proposing a budget, a total budget of about, well, we're projecting revenues of about $46.5 million and that's in all funds for the city. This is about a 12% decrease compared to what we are estimating for this year's budget. And then we're projecting an ending fund balance at the end of next year of just under $10 million. This is about a 2% increase over this year's budget. Looking at expenditures, total expenditures, we are looking at about a $37 million budget for, for all funds. That includes the general fund, the capital investment program fund, and our seven special revenue funds. This total is about a 20% decrease compared to this year's adjusted budget. And as, as you can see in the, in the chart, the general fund operating budget is our largest fund in the city, about, at 77%. Speaking just about the general fund now, we are projecting revenues of about 20, just under $28 million for next year with a beginning fund balance of just under $10 million, so total available funds next year of, of just under $38 million. And the revenue projections are about a 1.7% increase compared to what we are projecting for revenues this year. If you look at our revenue sources, as you all know by now, sales tax, sales tax, sales taxes is our biggest revenue source for the city. If you add use tax onto that, close to 70% of our revenues come from sales and use tax. And just to note, property tax is one of our smaller revenue sources at 3%. General fund expenditures, the budget for 2014 is proposed at $27.8 million and we're projecting again, revenues of about $27.8 also. So, a small surplus of about $63,000 that City Council could choose to transfer to the CIP budget if they'd like. Revenues or expenditures are about a 1% decrease compared to this year's budget. This will provide for a total ending fund balance next year in the general fund of, of just over $8 million. However, the unrestricted portion of that, meaning the, the amount that you can spend at your discretion, is just under $5 million at 4.7, which is about 17.2% of our expenditures. If you look at how expenditures are broken down throughout the city, this stays pretty standard. Every year, the police department is about 33% of our general fund budget. Parks and Rec and Public Works are usually about the same, around 15, 14%. Administrative Services is, which mainly, most of our internal support services, 12%. Central charges are mainly our insurances, workers' comp, compensation insurance, property liability insurance, all of our medical, dental insurance for employees. And then we have some smaller departments, community development, municipal court, and general government. As I mentioned before, City Council has set for- As I mentioned before, City Council, um, has set, um, four, um, unique goals for the city, and we try to identify, um, items for expenditures that will, um, have an impact on those goals and will move the city closer to, um, seeing those goals come to fruition. Under the first goal of economically viable commercial areas, there is in the budget, things that are included in the budget, um, include some expenses for Ridge at 38th, um, public events, um, budget of $80,000, uh, s- some street, minor street improvements of, of $25,000, corridor marketing, um, map and directory, $7,000, um, marketing materials and, and website, 35,000, um, banners and light, lighting program, $25,000. A district feasibility study, um, was originally at 20,000, that has been reduced to 10,000. And some marketing efforts for our business corridor along 40, 44th Avenue at $10,000. Um, we've also, um, have numerous businesses have come into the city over the last year who have received some tax incentives from the city. We're estimating that, um, those incentives for those numerous programs will be about $103,000 in 2014. We've received the Brownfields EPA grants, um, to help with, um, property development and environmental cleanup, um, assessments. We're planning to spend a majority of that next year, um, $289,000. Live Local Events, which are pretty popular right now, um, as some of them were announced or mentioned this evening, um, original proposed budget was 40,000, that has been reduced by five to 35,000. As I mentioned before, the Wheat, contribution to the Wheat Ridge Business District for, um, their grant program has been reduced from 90 to 45,000. The Building Up Business Loan Program, which is administered by Wheat Ridge 2020, we have $25,000 budgeted for that. Then the city also contributes, um, funds to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority or Renewal Wheat Ridge for their, uh, annual activities. We are projecting $425,000 for 2014. The second goal, uh, financially sound city, providing exceptional service, um, we are projecting a, uh, proposing a 3% average, um, uh, employee compensation, uh, increase for next year, which will total about $450,000. Continuing our efforts on priority-based budgeting, um, $17,000. Our paid time off cash out program of $50,000, uh, fleet acquisition and replacement, um, as I mentioned before, that's been reduced by one vehicle or 48,000, down to 377,500. Fortunately, we're able to, um, still be able to fund some street maintenance next year, um, albeit at a small amount, 1.2 million we have in the budget. Our Lakewood Crime Lab Services, 69,000, and our Regional Crime Lab, 23,000, and, um, Public Works Parks Maintenance Facility, uh, upgrades at 250,000. Continuing on with the same goal, um, we are proposing to transfer 100,000 to our Equipment Replacement Fund, which helps purchase large, um, expensive, uh, pieces of equipment over, over the years. Contributing to our Employee Safety and Wellness Program to keep, um, wellness or, um, insurance costs down, we're proposing 26,300 for that. Some swimming pool covers out for our outdoor pool to help conserve energy and reduce utility expenses, that's a $22,000 expense, and a new, new software program for the Police Department, e-citations to increase efficiency and effectiveness in their operations, uh, $53,105. Moving on to our third goal, Choice of Desirable Neighborhoods. We are proposing to, um, continue moving forward with our Aging Population Needs Plan, some implementation steps, which was a City Council strategic goal, that's a $13,000 cost. Our East Wheat Ridge Block Improvement Program, which, um, the Police Department works in conjunction with Wheat Ridge 2020, um, we have $20,000 budgeted for that. We're, originally, we're, um, proposing to reduce that by five, down to 15,000. And then, on top of that, the East, for the East Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Project, the Police Department, um, has a grant to fund police overtime in an amount of just over $8,000. The Home Investment Loan Program, which is administered through 2020, Wheat Ridge 2020 is a $25,000 expense, and completion of our District 2 Neighborhood Park on, at 44th and Kendall, um, is being funded out of the Conservation Trust and Open Space Funds of $175,000. It's partially grant-funded. Continuing on with Choice of Desirable Neighborhoods, um, we are, we have a, a large project out of the Open Space Fund to, uh, expand and repair our, our Green Belt Trail, um, down to Clear Creek. Updates to both our Parks and Recreation Master Plan and Green Belt Trail Master Plan, $50,000. Police Department, uh, has, uh, staffing, overtime funding for, uh, community-oriented neighborhood programs, and, um, also for our Green Belt Patrol, both over, just over $17,000. And then also, a new expense for next year is, um, to hire additional seasonal community service officers for nu- nuisance code and park patrols, um, specifically during the summer of just $145, $40,000. Our last goal is, um, more attractive Wheat Ridge. We have several items in the budget that address this goal. Bus shelter and, and bus maintenance and cleaning, um, there's bus benches going in as we speak across the, throughout the city right now, um, that's a cost to get, keep those maintained and cleaned, $36,000. Additional annual, um, plantings for 38th Avenue at 5,000. Kipling Street Multi-Use Path and Lighting Program, um, will be started here, it's this, at the end of this year and completed next year. This is a, a large grant program, um, $2.8 million budgeted for that. Miscellaneous Park Maintenance Projects across the city, um, 255,000. Our Annual Large Item Pickup Program is 5,000, um, and a, uh, increase in Park Maintenance Workers, um, 34,000, and a, um, reclassification of a seasonal maintenance worker, um, in the parks, which will be about a $20,000 expense. Some other notable budget items, um, that, that are included in the budget are continue, um, continuing to fund the Zope Family Circus, um, of just over $105,000. The city does, um, receive, um, I think this last year we received around 60,000 in revenue from that program, so, um, the city does contribute just, just over 40,000 for that event. Um, our outside agency request to our, to local service nonprofits in the community, 10,000. Feed the Future Backpack Program, 10,000. Our Biannual Citizen Survey, 30,000. Victim Outreach Services, um, they've increased their, um, their costs, we contract that out, um, the cost has increased, um, pretty substantially, um, for 2014, um, about a $35,000 increase up to $75,000. And then our Annual Carnation Festival Cash and In-Kind Assistance of $12,500 and $28,000 respectively. A few other, uh, notable items in the budget, um, we're continuing to, uh, make sure we're complying with, um, Americans with Disability Act, um, improvements to our parks, uh, Green Belt, um, in our picnic shelters, we have 10,000 budgeted for that. Some court, courtroom security improvements, um, next door, 63,000. And lastly, um, a Management Contingency Fund of 100,000. This has enabled us to consolidate contingency funds from across, um, this, all the city departments, and, um, enabled us to actually reduce that budget by 70,000 to save some money, so. So those are all the notable, um, additions to the budgets. We'll talk briefly about some of our other funds, uh, moving on to the Capital Investment Program Fund. We are projecting, or proposing a budget of, of just over $4.1 million, um, and, uh, revenues of 4.1 also. 69% of those funds will be for, um, street projects, and those projects include, um, the Kipling Street Pedestrian Improvements, which I mentioned earlier, at about $2.8 million, that's partially grant-funded. Our annual preventative street maintenance projects of 1.2 million, um, the City Hall improvements to the, to the court next door, 63,000, and so, city's contribution to, um, the Dowd Overlook Residential Project on the West 38th Avenue, we're contributing to the stormwater improvements for that project at $25,000. Um, the Recreation Center Fund, um, proposed budget of 2.3 million, um, revenues of about 2.1 million. Our proposed open space funds, projected revenues of 1.6 million, or, I'm sorry, expenditures of 1.6 million, revenues of 1.2 million. The major open space fund projects for next, proposed for next year, um, we, we, uh, budget and, and fund five Parks Maintenance Staff Employees out of this budget of just under a half a million dollars. The largest project is the Trail Replacement Repair to Clear Creek of 450,000, um, the Public Works Parks Operation Facility, 250,000, the new park at, at Kendall, not Kendall and 44th, 125,000 in District 2. Prospect Park Design Improvements, 80,000. The Open Space Fund is contributing to the Kipling Pedestrian Improvements also at 70,000. And Randall Park Acquisition Improvements, if, if City Council decides to, um, acquire a piece of property or parcel adjacent to that park, um, improvements would cost about 50,000. And then the Master Plan Updates, the Green Belt and, um, Parks is 50,000, and miscellaneous open space improvements, 10,000. And our Conservation Trust Fund Budget, um, expenditures of just over a half a million. These, um, revenues of, of about 300,000 come from the Colorado Lottery. The major projects for 2014 include, um, uh, planning for the Anderson Building Replacement, actually putting funds aside, um, to build up a, a fund balance to, uh, do something with the Anderson Building. 200,000, uh, Recreation Center Maintenance Projects of just over 100,000, Prospect Park Expansion Playground, 100,000, um, the Kendall Park again, 50,000, um, Miscellaneous Parks Maintenance Projects, 40,000, and resurfacing of tennis and basketball courts, 25,000. So those are the, the made, the summary of our expenditures and our funds. There are several other very small funds, which I won't discuss this evening, but, um, there is information on the city's website, um, in, and in the proposed budget for the public if they'd like to see those. We are proposing a few minor staff changes for 2014. One is first, the elimination of a position, um, in the Recreation Center Fund. This is a one, um, 1.0 FTE Pool Manager. Then an increase in the following areas, uh, one full-time FTE Equivalent Combination Inspector in our Building Department to manage, um, our increased building activity. This would be a temporary position based on, on need. An increase in a current employee who's currently working, um, .75 FTE, um, would be increased to a full-time, um, payroll technician, and then also a, a new, um, full-time Parks Maintenance Worker too, um, so that we have a net increase of 1.25 FTEs. Benefits and, and, and compensation for employees, um, as we've discussed with Council in the past, we continue our total compensation approach where we look at total compensation includes pay and benefits, um, and other, um, benefits that the city may provide, um, career advancement and such. We are in year two, we will be in year two of a Pay Performance Plan, um, in 2014. As I mentioned before, we are projecting that, um, average increases to, um, emp- employees' Pay Performance Systems, um, in the metro area are gonna be about 3%, that equates to about $450,000. And we will conduct a, a market study in 2015, or in 2014, which, um, will be implemented in 2015 if there are any major adjustments, um, in the market. And health insurance revisions was, was also discussed, um, at the City Council Study Session when we reviewed the budget. We are proposing, this is, um, is, is new, um, since we've met with City Council, but we are proposing to eliminate, um, the deductible, um, HMO plan that the city currently has, that's the DHMO. And we are proposing to, um, decrease the city's contribution, um, levels for the city's HMO plan by 5% for all tiers, um, but no lower than 75%. And our plan is to incentivize, um, the high deductible health plan to get more employees into that plan, which is a cheaper plan for the city and the employee, um, but there is a, a, a large deductible which is, does not come with the traditional HMO plan. And we plan to incentivize that by keeping the city's contribution, um, higher than HMO, be it 95, city will contribute 95% for employee, 90 for employee plus one, and 85 for family, and will also contribute, um, money to the employee's HSA or Health Savings Account, um, $1,000 for family and 700 for employee. It's our focus is, is to continue, um, our efforts at our long-term wellness strategy to, um, keep costs down, um, and to get as many employees into the high deductible plan, which, which will save money for the city in the long term. So, budget summary, um, we have presented a, um, 2014 proposed General Fund Budget, which was balanced without using the city's reserves. We are, um, projecting a $63,000 surplus, which, um, uh, staff is recommending City Council, um, uh, give, give staff direction on, on how to use that, and we are recommending that, that potentially could be used for, um, bike, biking facilities along Pier Street. 8.3 million of the budget expenses are directly linked to City Council's goals. Budget is balanced, however, we are continuing to defer some maintenance and large equipment replacements, so that's something I think that we're gonna need to discuss and, and have further dialogue on, on how we're gonna catch up on, on some of those expenses. We are proposing to have, um, an ending fund balance or reserves at the end of next year, which will equate to about 17.2% of the City Council's expenditures. If you all remember, you have a, a policy currently in place that you will maintain at least a 17%, um, reserve balance for your General Fund. We also are proposing to transfer 100,000 to our Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, um, to fund those large equipment replacements. Examples of those include, um, our records management system for the Police Department and our computer aided dispatch, also for our 911 system, those are very expensive, um, pieces of equipment to replace, and, um, and we're coming up pretty close to, uh, needing to replace those, so it's, it's good to keep money set aside for those. And then, uh, balancing the budget, we were able to transfer, um, 1.7 million from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Program, um, to fund capital projects for next year. With that, I will stop and take public comment. Please step forward to the podium and please spell your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Hultin, and it's spelled H-U-L-T-I-N, um, and I actually live at 4690 Balsam Street, and, uh, I recently joined Livewell Wheat Ridge as the Transition Coordinator. I've been working alongside Molly Hansen and Ted Hayde, and I've been abundantly impressed with the scope and the scale of healthy eating, active living initiatives the city has achieved in a relatively short period of time. Knowing the accomplishments behind and the opportunities ahead, excuse me, I'm eager to roll up my sleeves and continue engaging with city staff, with Council, the Mayor, and partner organizations to advance a sustainable, vibrant, and healthy Wheat Ridge. Overall, the city is to be commended for including funds in the 2014 draft budget for several improvements that would support active living in Wheat Ridge for ages, for all ages and all abilities. Specifically, Livewell Wheat Ridge would like to recognize and commend various city staff members who requested funding for the following items. Completion of the Kipling Multi-Use Trail between 26th and 44th Avenues, the Green Belt Trail Master Plan, as well as expansion and repair, 38th Avenue Street Improvements, District 2 Neighborhood Park, and the Wadsworth Planning and Environmental Linkage Study. Additionally, it's encouraging to see that multi-modal transportation emerged from the city staff's priority-based budgeting process and has been identified as a priority in their 2013, 2014 action agenda. I will tell you, I am delighted tonight, to be revising my notes, that the Council will be considering allocating the approximately $63,000 budget surplus towards bicycle facility improvements along Pier Street. Livewell Wheat Ridge and many community members believe improvements such as on-street bike lanes or shared lanes are a relatively low-cost way of improving connectivity and providing access to active transportation for the Wheat Ridge community. This past week, I had the opportunity to ride Pier Street with Public Works Director Scott Brinkes, Gil McCormick of Wheat Ridge Cyclery, and Scott Christopher of Bicycle Colorado. We rode from 48th Avenue south to 26th Avenue where Pierce connects with Lakewood's bike facilities and continues to RTD's West Line, uh, West Line Light Rail. This ride underscored the importance of a north-south bicy- bicycle facility. We believe increasing safe options for all abilities of cyclists is a way to get more of our residents and visitors to have, to the destinations in our communities, which can have economic, health, environmental, and social benefits. can have economic, health, environmental, and social benefits. Livewell Wheat Ridge strongly supports investing in bike lane facilities along Pierce and offers assistance of additional information to any council members and city staff as they consider this. Thank you, council, mayor, and staff for your dedication and care to make Wheat Ridge a great and healthy place to live. Thank you.
This thing is always magnificent. Janice Hoppe, H-O-P-P-E, I live at seven thousand West Thirty-Fifth Avenue. I live in District One. I own Compass Construction, and I also serve on the Board of Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty and the Wheat Ridge Business District. The investments made by the city and, by the city into Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty programs have had an impact. On Sunday, October sixth, the Denver Post covered the revitalization that has been occurring in Wheat Ridge on the cover of its business section. While the reporter utilized only some of the quotes in the article, he spoke to eight businesses, including mine, Compass Construction, and why we've invested here. All of those businesses had participated in Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty, be it through loans, live local events, or more. They cited positive experiences in working with the city of Wheat Ridge. I hope that many of you have had the same positive experience I did in hearing from friends and business associates that, who had read the work and appreciated the work that we have been doing together on Wheat Ridge. I have previously testified, you're probably sick of my testifying, about the difference that these programs have made for our business, Compass Construction, and the reason why we then moved our family to Wheat Ridge, and also our involvement in the community. I currently spend, I was adding it up, I currently spend anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five hours a week volunteering in the Wheat Ridge community in different programs, including Trunk or Treat, which is coming up. Tonight, I simply want to remind you that these programs are effective and have made a difference. I also wanted to let you know that we heard your feedback that the budget is tight, and Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty staff worked with the city of Wheat Ridge staff to reduce the amount of funding in our request. We see ourselves as partners with the city and work to be responsive to your priorities while delivering programs and results that help build our community. Thank you for your past investment, and I encourage you to fully fund the requests for economic and community development, specifically those partnering with Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty. Thank you.
I'm in favor of a couple things that I just want to comment, they're in the budget already, but I appreciate that you're going to give money to Feed the Future, and I think, excuse me, Outdoor Lab, and, I'm sorry, Senior Resource Center. But I want to comment on the budget in general. There's been a big fuss, and it was all discussed at the forum, how there'd been an effort to raise the taxes, and they didn't get it, and now the city is in this great financial stress. And tonight, they did mention again that there's not enough money for street maintenance. So frankly, I think you could do a little more cutting in several places. I would like to beg you, beg you to quit studying everything. Please don't spend any more money to study Thirty-Eighth Avenue, you know, you don't, some of you don't know this, but, I mean, I was last on the council in ninety-one, and we were fighting over Thirty-Eighth Avenue back then, and you have spent study after study after study. Unless I'm wrong, isn't there another feasibility study in the budget tonight? Please, do not, do not do that. There's also a lot of money, it seems to me, fifty thousand for the master plan update. There's eighty thousand for Prospect Park Design, but I can't tell how much of that is design and how much you're actually going to do something. But the thing I want to talk to you about the most, and this is very awkward because I've known Britta Fisher and people from Twenty-Twenty a long time, and when, the last time there was an effort to cut their budget, I came in and spoke in favor. But I would like to point out to you something I know you know, is that their original goal and program has long since gone, by the way. They started out buying houses, townhomes also, I think, in accordance with the Neighborhood Revitalization Study, and they don't do that anymore. It is now very social, and, I'm sorry, I consider it a political committee. There, everybody's, who belongs there is running for council, and we give an awful lot of money to what is a really political organization. And you know, I've been a member of Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods for many, many years, and our members ran for council, and most of them got elected, but we never, never, never got any money from the city of Wheat Ridge, except for one thing, that you let us use this room and your camera for the forum, and I think that's a big, but I've tried to keep track of what is still on your budget, because I noticed you've changed it. But unless I'm wrong, you've still got over a hundred thousand dollars to a private organization for basically marketing, and a lot of the marketing is not just for the city, it's marketing Twenty-Twenty. And I think it's time that they are on their own. They're a private organization, supposedly nonprofit, and I think it's time that they actually do finance themselves. Thank you. And one other little comment, I was sorry to see that you're cutting any money, any contribution, for your staff's medical bills, because no matter how much you pay, you know the bills are always incredibly large, and I don't quite know what the rationale was to cut the contribution for that. Thank you.
Yes, excuse my throat, Herb Shilrough, thirty-nine-hundred Garrison, fifty-year member of Wheat Ridge. My first comment is on Thirty-Eighth Street. I think that's a disaster. I don't know who programmed or engineered that, but I don't believe much thought was given to it at all. I have to question if, what few additional businesses have moved in there, have really paid for anything. It's really safer to drive on I-25 than go down Thirty-Eighth. People are backing into you, turning left and right, or you, make sure you have to have your seatbelt on. Now, the other item I have on Kipling, you're speaking of running a path or something up Kipling, that's no location for a bicycle path. Kipling is too steep, you have private property that go right out to Kipling that you'd have to buy. The expense of that is just not worth it. And the other thing, I like these bicycle paths and walking paths, but somewhere along the line, someone else is going to have to help support them. You know, bicycle riders don't have to have a license. Walking, you don't need anything. But us common, ordinary people, all of us, have to help support the thing. So in the future, I think you ought to look into some way of having some fee or something. The only item I really agreed with you here tonight is your employees. I believe they're due for a raise, a good three percent raise, I believe would be a good act for your employees. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments for the budget tonight? So Patrick, do you want to just repeat the night that's going to be voted on, please?
Yeah, it's currently scheduled for October twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thank you for coming and your comments. So move on to item number four, which is Resolution forty-one dash two thousand and thirteen. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. Resolution number forty-one dash two thousand and thirteen, a resolution adopting the updated Northwest Subarea Plan, and by such adoption, amending the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan, case number WPA dash thirteen dash zero-one Northwest Subarea, at issue. The Northwest Subarea is one of the five priority reinvestment areas in the city's comprehensive plan, and is also the future location of the Wheat Ridge Ward Station at the end of the RTD Gold Line. In two thousand and six, a subarea plan was adopted to establish a vision for future development around the commuter rail station. Since the original plan adoption, many milestones have been reached and an update is warranted. The attached resolution recommends adoption of the updated Northwest Subarea Plan. The plan is an advisory document that will help provide information for future investment and development decisions. Notice for this public hearing was provided as required by the Code of Laws.
Move on to staff presentation?
Yeah, I'll be brief and obviously available for any questions, but did want to give a brief presentation. We've been before council on two occasions during the process. We have had a couple of public outreach meetings to the general public and to the property owners in the area. We had a public site tour for the project, and we most recently had a public hearing before the Planning Commission. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, but again, available to answer questions as well. The Northwest Subarea, in terms of a planning process, really got a...
Excuse me, there they go. We're going to have the demo lights on.
Great, thank you. The Northwest Subarea, the Northwest part of town really came on our agenda as a planning project during the formation from RTD of the plans for the Gold Line. And this graphic depicts the Gold Line originating in Union Station, going up through North Denver, and then coming through parts of Adams County. There's a station at Pecos, there's a station at Forty-first and Fox in Denver, a station in Pecos in Adams County, a station in Federal, also in Adams County, three stations in Arvada, at Sheridan, in Old Town Arvada, and off of Kipling at what they call Arvada Ridge, and then finally terminating at the Ward Road Station in Wheat Ridge. There are grand plans at some point that the Gold Line could be extended out into Golden, but that is not currently part of the funded project, which is, we're excited to say, under construction and scheduled to open in two thousand and sixteen. Just a real quick summary of what the city came up with in terms of adopting a subarea plan for this area back in two thousand and six. It, too, was a very public effort involving the property owners in the neighborhood up there. I think it was four public meetings that were, that were held. And really, it was just to try and get ahead of the curve in terms of looking at what this area might look like with the impact, hopefully positive impact, of a future commuter rail station that gets you down to Denver Union Station in about twenty-five minutes. So a fairly, I guess I'd say typical subarea plan associated with transit, recommending tran, what we like to call transit-oriented development, which is higher density, it's typically mixed-use, it's definitely walkable, tries to reduce the role of parking to some extent, and make it a very walkable neighborhood focus. The planning area that you generally look at when you're planning around stations is kind of the, I'll just say, five to maybe fifteen-minute walk from the station, so kind of a quarter mile to a half a mile. Obviously, we all walk at different speeds depending on our abilities and what we, what our, what our mood is, I suppose. I just go with a few reasons for why we're updating it. I mean, I think at first blush, two thousand and six doesn't seem that long ago, it's actually seven years. So it is a few years. I think typically, subarea plans to stay fresh and kind of active, you know, you often look at updating them between five and ten years. So we are kind of in that, that time period as well. But more importantly, we just, there've been a lot of things happen. The Gold Line EIS, the Environmental Impact Statement, as part of the federal funding process, was completed, finalized the location for the station and other components, such as the parking lot design, so we wanted to update it to be consistent with that document. The city adopted a new citywide comprehensive plan in two thousand and nine. One thing that plan identified was the desire for the city to have more primary employment in the city, and the fact that this area around the station could be one location that could have those primary jobs in and around, not necessarily within the quarter to half mile, but possibly. So not at the expense of other development, but definitely something we could encourage, and something that might make us a little bit unique over some of the other stations on the line, notably the Old Town Station and the Arvada Ridge Station off of Kipling, which clearly already have the start of a more residential and retail focus. The urban renewal designation was adopted in two thousand and nine as well. That certainly sets up certain financing tools that might be used to build the public improvements that will be needed to make this a walkable area, so wanted to reflect that in the plan. The Bike Ped Plan was adopted in two thousand and ten, most recently, and that, too, has a number of upgrades to the facilities in this area that we wanted to reflect on the subarea plan to be consistent in terms of just kind of a one-stop-shop document. The mixed-use zoning was adopted in two thousand and ten. There were four different types of mixed-use districts that were put on the books that property owners or the city could initiate rezonings of property. We have had conversations with the property owners in this area. It's been a couple of years now, they, there wasn't a lot of interest initially. Having said that, the former Jolly Rancher site, the about sixteen-acre site that's directly adjacent and north and west of the station location, did request a rezoning to mixed-use TOD, and council did approve that. The Streetscape Design Manual was also updated and approved, adopted in two thousand and eleven. That establishes new street sections for collector's streets in terms of tree lawns and sidewalk dimensions, and those are reflected in this planning document. And then finally, in terms of some of the things that happened, the city was fortunate to receive an EPA Smart Growth Grant that identified a variety of ways that this station and other stations like it across the metro area could look to fund and build infrastructure. So a variety of, of some innovative, some not so innovative, but good to have kind of a one-stop-shop document of when we go to build this infrastructure, how are we going to pay for that? So those are now part of kind of the economic development and implementation section of this, of this document. In terms of what has been updated and is proposed for your adoption this evening, I guess I'd start with what's not changing. I mean, I think we would be quick to acknowledge that the overall vision for mixed-use transit-oriented development, development around the station to take advantage of this end-of-line station in Wheat Ridge is not changing. And we'd also acknowledge that these plans are long-term in nature, that this is a transformative plan in terms of the area being, parts of it largely vacant, it has more of an industrial character, which is fine for the time being, for sure. So this is very long-term in nature, maybe particularly relative to some of the other existing stations along the Gold Line that maybe have a little more already to build off of. But what have we updated? I'll use the cursor to go over some of the land use recommendations. In the southern portion, on the southern side of the tracks, this had been really just a commercial designation and kind of fine-tuning, but we, we made this a mixed-use employment designation to give us the ability to be flexible. One of the things that's changed since the two thousand and six adoption is we, we've had the idea that there could be a bike bridge across the railroad tracks here. If that were the case, that would certainly open up more opportunities for mixed-use to occur on both sides of the tracks. The pink designation on the north side of the station and the north side of the tracks remains the same. That's just a mixed-use designation focused around the station. You'll note on the two sides, on this side along Ward Road and along this side adjacent to existing residential, we think those are transition areas, and it's important to both acknowledge that the traffic along Ward Road, you know, presents more of a commercial opportunity, and that can be a good thing. And conversely, on the east side, adjacent to the established neighborhoods, that you need to be respectful of those in terms of how you transition in terms of buffers and density. And then lastly, having a little trouble with the cursor, here we go. This area at the far eastern edge of, of the plan area was not included in the plan area before, and we think, given improvements that are being made to Tabor Street as part of the RTD project, as well as the fact that it's well within that quarter-mile designation, that it presents an opportunity. It's a really underutilized industrial property. I know there has been some developer interest on that as well. So that, I'm available for questions, that is my presentation for this evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Would anybody like to speak on item number four from the public?
I feel like I should sing "Blowing in the Wind." I keep bringing up the same thing, but I really do care about this. Could you put the map back up that shows the different kind of sections? Yeah, that's fine. Oh, it's right there. I and some of my neighbors are very concerned of the idea that you can have really tall buildings up on that lavender, or whatever you want to call it. If you go up there, you'll notice that is the absolute highest, I think that's the highest place in the city, unless there's something high up there by the high school. Then, as you come down towards the I-70 and the railroad tracks, of course, it drops down. But the idea that you might have a hundred and twenty-two-foot building up there is just kind of chokes me.
But the idea that you might have a 122-foot building up there is just kind of chokes me. And I want to go back to one of your goals. One of the goals you brought up tonight, as you always do, is a more attractive city. And there are a couple of things in this city that are very, very attractive and very much an attraction for bringing businesses and people here. One is the Green Belt and the other parks, and the other is our mountain view. And since none of you live near there, you think, well, no big deal if somebody puts a 100-foot building there. But you can see that, I can see it from where I am, but you can also see it from the new park at 38th and Kipling. You can see it, anybody who lives up in the rest of the city, you can see, and this is probably the most important thing, is that anybody who drives west or east on I-70, if they glance up, they have a beautiful, beautiful view of the mountains. And if this passes, one day, people are going to say, what happened? What happened to the view? It used to be a beautiful view. And so I would like to ask somebody to make a motion that the height limit is not allowed, that tall height limit is not allowed on that very northern part. I think that's going to be a dreadful damage to our city. Now, I know, I brought this up with the Planning Commission and then the Planning Director basically said, I think he was kind of saying, it's too late, you already passed that for the Jolly Rancher property. I just hope that whoever builds there will not put a tall building up and that you don't make it possible for anybody else to put a really tall building up. And I do have another comment, I guess I didn't notice before, but when, maybe you can answer me, when did they add this piece to the east? Isn't that right next to a whole lot of residences? That they suddenly are going to make that a mixed use? Or is that, maybe you can answer me, has it always been in there? Has it? No? You don't have to answer me, but I'm just...
I'm glad to, just if council would like, I assume.
Sure, go ahead.
The area on the east that we added, that was one of the, we had two public workshops as part of this planning process, and that was one of the questions that we brought at that first process for the public to give us their input on, and people supported the idea. It's adjacent to the south, across 49th Avenue, to a multi-story assisted living facility. It's a very industrial outside storage kind of...
It's a very what?
It's a very industrial property currently. It has a lot of outside storage facilities on it, it's kind of a junkyard of sorts.
Is the light color still residential? Can I ask that?
That is the residential transition area. And then if you go further to the east of that, on the north side of the tracks, so this would be north of the property that's proposed to be added to the mixed-use area, that is a residential area on the other side of the tracks. And then property further to the east is vacant, not been previously developed.
I'd like to add one other thing that I brought up before. Will you please put some light restrictions up there? I know they're already building the light rail station, and I kind of cringe at the idea that they might light that the way they do the car places on Sixth Avenue. We're already very much impacted by those horrendously tall lights on the freeway, and if that whole area got very much lit up at night, it is going to bother a lot of people. Not that people live there, but a lot of people are going to look up there and say, what happened? So I thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for item number four? Can you move on to council discussion? Any discussion or comments before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing and our motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 41-2013, a resolution adopting the updated Northwest Subarea Plan, and by such adoption, amending the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four, with sector by Mr. Demott. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Well, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Would move on to city managers' matters?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing for me, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
I just wanted to tell everyone that the county will begin mailing out ballots tomorrow, so you should look for that in the mail. And we are, again, a polling place. We're going to put the ballot box in the lobby this time, so you don't have to walk quite as far. That will be taken, the box will be taken in at 5:00 every night, but during business hours from 8:00 to 5:00, you're welcome to come in and drop off your ballot rather than mail it. I heard a horror, we got a ballot, it was the ballot, not a voted ballot, but just a ballot that we sent out to somebody that was returned, they didn't live there, from the clerk's election two years ago. And it came, oh, six or eight weeks ago. So funny things happen in the mail. The people didn't live there, so, I mean, it's nothing that ever affected the election, but it was a ballot that was sent to somebody and returned, and we got it two years later. So, almost two years. So if you don't want to put your ballot in the mail, just come by City Hall and drop it off. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Yes, I'd like to invite everyone to our next, well, ours, not ours, but the city's Meet the Artist. It'll be at Rickoli Brewery. Okay, I have it written as Rickoli's. Try to be accurate when I put my information down. And that one runs from 5:30 to 7:00. So they're always fun, and Rickoli has, is in the I-10 addition to our city, so go visit and have fun.
Thanks. Ms. Davis?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know that you agreed with some, but not all of the decisions that were made, but I have the privilege of going to the Wheat Ridge Civic Academy just the other night and seeing a very large group of people who started that program. And as someone who did that many years ago, I know that it means that those people are committed and want to be activated in our community. And I think that's critically important right now. Again, regardless of whether we agree or disagree, but to be involved and to pay attention to what's going on. There's a lot of things going on right now. I think personally, I think all of them are important, and the more people we get involved on either side of the discussion, the better off we're going to be. Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
I, too, got to do that. That was kind of neat. 18 people, that's a pretty good record for that, citizens that are interested in our city and could be, you know, for future board and commission members and council members. But what I'm really, I got the orange flyer here, and that's about the, what we call trunk or treat, and this is the third year, I think, on it. It's been pretty fun, I've done it the last couple of years, but Ridge at 38th and 2020, I think it was started by one of the candidates, but it's going on and it's expanded. It's October 26th, which is a Saturday, and you've got to be thinking about how you're going to decorate your trunk, because that's what the two kids walk around, look at all the trunks. And they've added, oh my gosh, they've added a pumpkin dessert contest. That sounds pretty good to me. Hay rides and it's a game table. I mean, they've got a little old, what do you call it, haunted house, you know, all the things that you need for Halloween, so I'm really encouraging everybody to go to that.
Mr. Reinhardt?
The only thing I wanted to comment is what a pleasure it gives me that the construction project, work on the Chase Street Drainage is getting underway. That's a latent issue for a long, long time, and hopefully by the next rainy season, we'll have drainages that work better for that part of the community.
Mr. Demott?
I have just one item sort of related to the budget. I, you know, although I, we talk about the sidewalk, the multi-use trail on Kipling from 26th to, or 32nd to 44th, 26th to 44th. We've had a few requests, complaints, problems, whatever you want to call it, on the other side of the highway on Kipling, in front of the Mesa Verde Apartments and 7-Eleven and the car wash and stuff down there, we have absolutely no sidewalk down there. I know it's not within the scope of this project, but I just wanted to ask council to think about somehow, maybe we could make that part of that project or find some money somewhere. You know, there's, you know, I wouldn't call it a connectivity problem because there's no connectivity there. It's more of a safety issue at this point. I forwarded some emails that I had received to the city manager, and I've spoken to Mesa Verde Management and some of the management down in those businesses down there. And just wanted to give you a heads up, maybe I could, we could talk in the next few weeks about somehow trying to expand or make some sort of project on the sidewalk down there. I'd be happy to forward you the emails that I've received and keep that in mind. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wanted to express my appreciation to Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods for the election forum they held here recently. I thought it was very well done, well-attended, and hopefully our citizens will get a chance to see that tape on Channel 8. I'd like to put a thank you out to the people who take the time to come to these meetings, the citizens that come to these meetings, that contact their city councilors, that take an active interest in the formation of their government. Sometimes it seems that your voices don't care, it don't matter, but they do in fact matter, and I really would like to encourage people to come and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
States?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, drive around, there's a lot of new restaurants opening up in this city. You've got Davies over here off 26th and Kipling, the old Mercedes or the old broker restaurant. Down on the old House of Lords, you have, what is it, Just Home Cooking and Wine Not, or Taste of Home Cooking and Wine Not, that's been on TV several times now. And down on 38th, towards the end of the week, you're going to have Mama Sanino's open, another restaurant that we picked up from Arvada. So we're really starting to get a lot of good business in here, so you might want to go out and try experimenting and eating out a little bit more. Would be a great time to relocate your business or home to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with us and staff. Positive thing, you know, with the cold weather coming, and I noticed some kids today had no coats on, just flimsy t-shirts. Would you check with your neighbors and possibly see if, you know, someone in the neighborhood needs a coat? Watch them walk by your house, maybe you could offer them something, but boy, there's something about kids going hungry and then not having coats, that just bothers me. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. The only question I have for Mr. Goff is if you heard any more from Public Works about the CDOT issue on the undergrounding of Kipling between 32nd and 35th? I mean, everybody's ready to go except for waiting for CDOT, right?
Yeah, my understanding is, I got a message from the Public Works director late this afternoon that CDOT is working on a lot of the flooding reconstruction, and they're having a difficult time reviewing the plans, the right-of-way information that we've been sending them. So, but it sounds like everything else is teed up. We've got the right-of-way from the open space from Jefferson County, and I think Excel's ready to go, so it's just waiting on CDOT, so we'll stay on top of them.
So there's nothing they need from us?
Not, my understanding, no. We're waiting for them to review what we've sent them.
Anything else? Wheat Ridge, John?